Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the June 11, 2013, meeting of the Glendale City Council. Being called order at 6:01 PM, may we have a roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Legs' salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian, and a vocation by our city clerk, Artie Krasakian. Please rise.
Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for the invitation. Just last week, we had a presentation in these chambers for the observance of Flag Day and Flag Week, which began on Sunday and will run through June 15. A tradition that was born here in Glendale, in Montrose specifically, this week-long display of our nation's flag is an important symbolic gesture that demonstrates our gratitude for all that we appreciate as citizens and residents of this country. Let us pray this evening for all that our flag represents, the principles upon which this country was founded, and for which many have sacrificed. We pray for those who have struggled at home to make certain that the promises of our great flag are extended to every American. We pray for those who have taken up arms and left our shores to uphold these principles of our nation and our armed forces and have carried the flag as their symbol. Let us pray for the star-spangled banner of ours, and let us pray for all who appreciate it and work towards the goal of bettering our nation so long may Old Glory wave over these our United States of America. Amen.
Amen. May we have your report?
The agenda for the June 11, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed Friday, June 7, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What is next, please?
Under Presentation and Appointments, at 3 a.m. is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of June 18, 2013.
Mrs. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for June 18, we have no business agenda items for the Housing Authority. That afternoon, to commence at 3 p.m., we do have a Glendale City Council and Successor Agency meeting, and Director of Community Development, this is regarding financing options for the Central Library Rehabilitation Project. That afternoon, we also have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. This is Director of Community Development, this is Proposed Mixed-Use Retail Service Daycare and Restaurant Project, which is to be located at 507 through 525 West Colorado Street. That evening, for the council meeting to commence at 6 p.m., we have two items under consent, Chief Information Officer, ISD, annual maintenance and support for the city's Oracle Database System and PeopleSoft applications. Public Works, this is vacation of the First Public Alley west of Brand Boulevard and north of Palmer Avenue for the Star Ford Dealership Development Project, which is located at 1101 South Brand Boulevard. We have three items under Action, Director of Community Development, establishment of a medical services zone for properties including and adjacent to the Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Glendale's General Manager, GWP, feed and tariff for renewable energy facilities within the city of Glendale, and City Attorney, this is a report on administrative citations. And lastly, we do have a hearing that evening, Director of Public Works, this is regarding the levy and collection of annual assessments for the North San Fernando Corridor Landscape Maintenance District, and this is for fiscal year 1314. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
What is next, please?
At 3 a.m. is a mayor's commendation to Rio and Rachel Ray in recognition of their years of service to the city of Glendale with the Salvation Army.
Bill? Rachel? You alone?
Unfortunately, our venue's under council last minute.
Oh, I know.
So you've got the lesser half of the team.
Let me read this to you so you can get it and get home. It says, "In recognition for your valuable years of service as captains with the Salvation Army Glendale, on behalf of the city of Glendale, I would like to congratulate you for your new and exciting role as divisional youth secretaries. Your hard work and dedication is truly appreciated. Thank you for providing the Glendale community with the various programs that the Salvation Army offers. Best wishes for all your future endeavors." And Mr. Quintero, would you mind? Where are you going to be at?
We are going to Anchorage, Alaska.
Oh, geez.
Yes, so we are one of the frozen chosen that have been sent up there.
That's a good way to put it, frozen chosen.
Thank you.
Wonderful job throughout the years.
Thank you so much. I would just like to say thank you to Glendale in general for all they've done for me and for the group of people that are before you right now, for your partnership in helping the city of Glendale and helping the needy here. I know with many of you, I have served Thanksgiving dinner, we have done canned food drives, we have done volunteer groups together, we have played basketball together, and it's been a real blessing to be involved in such a city that cares so much. So thank you for leading the city, and thank you for what you've built into my life and my wife's life as well.
Thank you. Stay warm.
Stay warm, yes, yes. Whenever you're cold, pray for me, because I guarantee you I'll be a little bit colder.
And this is a promotion?
It is, it is.
Alaska. No figure.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Please go ahead. And next, please.
Next, at 3 c.m. is a mayor's commendation to Ariana Keshishian, the grand prize winner of the 2013 I Love My Neighborhood poster contest.
Ariana, I'll read this to you, and I'm coming down presented. I'll explain to my colleagues why. It says, "Congratulations on being the grand prize winner of the I Love My Neighborhood poster contest. I commend your participation and contribution towards maintaining a clean and beautiful Glendale. I wish you success for many years to follow." Now, for those of you who don't know, I've gone to virtually every poster contest. I might have missed a year or there. And all those years, they have them all assembled out, all the posters, and I always go back and try to pick out the winner. Now, this year, I did pick the winner before they announced it. And I also told her, and Mr. Quintero, you know what I'm talking about specifically, that we have poster contests at the Ball Hope Airport. I told her when she gets older, what could you do now?
What grade?
What grade, yes.
I just finished sixth grade.
Sixth grade. Your parents got to remember when she gets to high school to enter that contest, because if you can do what you do now, by the time you're in ninth, 10th grade, you'll win. I want to go to the airport and see your picture there. So I'll bring this down.
I don't know.
It's great, huh? Look at that. Do we have a camera to watch this one?
You turn it around, Mr. Mayor. That's good. That's the one back there above Councilman.
You see him, man?
Not bad for a sixth grader, a lot of thought into it. Beautiful. I couldn't draw that in, but a student in heart, I couldn't do it. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Honorable Mr. Mayor and the City Council members. This is truly a great honor for me.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is a mayor's commendation to John Gantis for his years of service on the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, John, come on up.
He's a sixth grade artist.
Well, John, you've served on there so long, you now get a commendation to leave.
I'll tell you.
Boy, what are you going to do with your time now?
Lot of time, you're right. I'm going to travel with my lovely wife, who many of you don't know is with me here tonight, and has been long-sufferings, I'm sure, your wives and significant others have also been, as you serve on this council.
Yeah, my problem is always at Christmas when I'm decorating the float. My wife wants to go to Hawaii, we haven't been in years because of that, so I know the feeling.
Yes, you do.
Now, my commendation reads, "In recognition of your outstanding years of service with the Civil Service Commission, on behalf of the city of Glendale, I would like to thank you for your invaluable insight over the years on a variety of employment-related matters. Your professional and diplomatic approach as a commissioner and leader of the community is highly commendable. I wish you continued success in your future endeavors." How many years have you served on the civils now, John?
About 14.
14 years.
Little less than 14 years. Plus six years on the Board of Zoning Adjustments.
But you must have liked it.
I loved it.
Good.
John, congratulations.
Thank you.
On your hard work.
It's hard work, you spend a lot of time doing it.
We do.
It's not like a regular commission where you meet once a month, it's many hours.
Yes.
And as a legal expert, that translates to a lot of global hours that you.
Thrown away.
Not as many as you, but yes.
We've talked about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I am deeply honored and humbled by this honor. I have served almost 14 years, as I indicated, and it has been something I've truly enjoyed. And what's made it enjoyable has been the support of many people. First and foremost, of course, is the City Council. I commend you for all of the support you've given to this commission, though you don't necessarily decide on our issues, you have been there to support us. I'm especially appreciative to those that have nominated me. My original nominators were Gus Gomez and Ginger Bremberg. Give us, remember Ginger.
Yes.
And then my next nominator was Councilman Quintero, and the next two were Councilmen, was Councilman Najarian. I'm very appreciative of that. And Mayor Weaver, I'm especially appreciative of you because you voted on all of my nominations. You've been on the council so long.
Sometimes you make a mistake. No, John, it was worth it. In the old days, when you rotated, you know, it wasn't the way we appoint now.
No.
So I never got the chance, so.
No, I know, and I do appreciate you voting for me. I'm also appreciative to the commissioners I've served with. I've served with some very, very fine commissioners, and your current commissioners, headed by Chairman Art Devine, Gara Gazarian, who's with us today, my brother from another mother, I call him, my fellow Lebanese, Ara Hatamian, and of course Sam Menuchian, we have a fine commission, and I feel very comfortable leaving that commission with these wonderful commissioners that are there. Also, my, one of my favorites, my sentimental favorite, is our four-star general, who's still around, Richard Davis, as many of you may not know.
Oh, yeah, Richard Davis, yes.
Richard Davis was on the commission, he's a four-star general, he's one of 12 four-star generals in the United States, and he lives in Glendale. And I understand, I hope to see him tomorrow night, we're having a little get-together.
Tell him we said hello.
We will. I'm also very appreciative to the staff, starting off with Jack Hoffman, who was Director of Personnel when I was appointed, and of course, Matt Doyle, Matt's here tonight. You have a spectacular Director of Personnel, he's a human resources, he's done an outstanding job, and what's made him even more outstanding is his ability to train and bring up those people that started at the bottom, if you will, and especially Manya Hunanian and Amy Martin, who was Amy Tempanian when I knew her. They are now both human resource administrators. Amy tells me she started off as a customer service representative, and Manya, who has a law degree, started off as an associate analyst one or something, and she's now, both of them are human resources administrators, and do outstanding work. I think we're in very good hands with you, I really believe that, and of course, our city manager, Yasmin, city manager Scott Achoa, and Yasmin Beers have also been very supportive. Thank you very much.
But she'll still be in town?
I'm in town, I'm not going anywhere, but I'm going to travel.
Other than vacation, other than travel.
Yeah, other than vacations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. You can go out for an early dinner if you want.
That's what we're going to do.
Don't be embarrassed about leaving. Okay, next, please.
Next is the City Council and Staff Comments.
Mrs. Friedman.
Because I will not be here next week, when the rest of the council does their commission appointment nominations, I'm going to enter mine tonight so that they can be voted on in two weeks. I'm reappointing most of my commissioners, there's going to be a few new faces. Just for the commissioners that are not being reappointed, you have all done a wonderful job. I thank you very much for your service and for the way that you've represented the city. I've just been very pleased with the work that all of the commissioners have done. For Arts and Culture Commission, I'm going to reappoint Terry Dever. For the Audit Committee, I'd like to nominate David Gaborkean. For CDBG Advisory Board, Romella Marcarien. For Designer Review Board, Varej Martien. For GWP Commission, I'd like to renominate Terry Chan. For Historic Preservation Commission, Arlene Vidor. Parks and Recreation and Community Services, Peter Fwad. Planning Commission, Stephanie Langreagan. Commission on the Status of Women, Paula Devine. And for Transportation and Parking Commission, Alec Bartrosouf. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Oh, Frank.
To talk about the Chamber of Commerce Annual Gala, the number of council members attended, as well as the staff, it was quite nice, and it's growing every year, it seems to be a little bit bigger. I think our business, businesses here in the city are doing quite well, because certainly the membership in the various chambers are up. And then the second event, just as notable, was the Civic Center's inauguration of the indoor soccer opportunity. Man, were there kids. I mean, I knew there were going to be a lot of kids there that day, but it was packed, all age groups, just dying to, dying for us to cut the ribbons. They wanted to get in there and play, and it's really going to be great for the civic, certainly going to be a good cash flow for the cities, and we're just going to open up lots of opportunities, not just for kids, but also for adult leagues. So JAS, Duran, and Onik, and everyone that put this together, did a great job, and I'm looking forward to watching the soccer, and also looking forward to the revenues that it's going to generate.
Go ahead.
Yes, I also attended both events, both wonderful events. The Civic is projected to leave $100,000 in revenues in the first year, which is fantastic news. And just to think, the great activity that the kids will be engaged in while the city will be getting money, so it's best of both worlds. And I will also be out of the, I won't be here for the next two meetings, although for their budget approval meeting, I will not be here physically, but here, in essence, through the internet, through Skype. And I'll be, just so that no questions are asked later, I'll be away for the baptism of my three boys, and I look forward to coming back and continuing the work. You will have my nominations, and we'll vote on it.
Okay, so you're just, I don't know, it's on the agenda for next week?
For the balance of the council, but we can always accommodate council either telephonically or.
Didn't want you to.
Skype. Thank you, I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah, and I'm sorry I couldn't, I was going to go to the soccer, but you have to understand, when you have kids who have kids, and it was at the last minute, I was able to assemble all 10 of them together, and that happened so rarely that I had to take advantage of that to be with my grandchildren at one time, with my wife, so I knew it was going to be great. Glad you all showed up.
Kids will be participating real soon, I'm sure.
I think they're going volleyball, basketball, football, I don't know, baseball. You never know what the kids are going to like the most. I hope they make good decisions. Okay, Mr. Najarian, I'm sorry.
Mr. City Manager, just so I'm clear, will the appointments be voted on in two weeks? In two weeks?
Nominations.
So I can wait till next week?
Yes.
To do that? Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to do that, I will wait. I do have just a couple things to say. The, the construction, the heavy construction that we're currently seeing in our downtown, in my opinion, has now created a transportation and a public safety hazard. The main thoroughfares, Central Avenue, which is having a curb and gutter and sidewalk repaired done concurrently with the Lex at Orange and the excavation at the, what's it called, the famous, the legendary, as well as Orange Street, is beyond just an inconvenience. It has gotten to the situation where I think there is a public safety hazard. In the case of a fire truck, a fire emergency, an ambulance, or any other sort of emergency vehicle having to traverse any one of those streets, traffic is backed up, there's no way for them to move aside in the event of an emergency vehicle coming by. I would very much like staff to look at this, and I don't see any stopping, any relief in sight, because we've got Orange and, we've got Wilson and Brand being constructed, we've got the John Fabrics being constructed, we've got the one across the street on Central. I want to make sure that those streets are safe in case of an emergency. There's a lot of high rises in the area, there's a lot of raw lumber currently being used, there's a crane towering 10 stories above us with huge slabs of concrete as ballast. It's scary. It is a scary situation. I beg staff to look at that and make sure that that's what we, is that what we had in mind when we approved all these projects to be done at the same time? Not in terms of design or density, but in terms of the actual construction sequencing, I think we have a dangerous situation. So please, staff, fire, police, our engineer, traffic, please take a look at that, because it is not a pretty scene. The other, the other comment I'd like to make is, I got the LA Department of Transportation Annual Report, very nice report, but on the back, they show how the community is invited and permitted to decorate the traffic control boxes. We all have seen those, they look like approximately refrigerator-sized boxes at almost every intersection. I'd like to get this through the proper channels to permit our residents to conduct the same sort of artistic work, and whoops, this is one in the Palms area of Los Angeles, and it's nicely decorated with a flower with a name of the Palms neighborhood on there. So whether this needs to go through Arts and Culture or Planning, let's, let's make this available. I think it'd be a great project for the neighborhood to get involved in. I'll just pass that around.
I would second that.
I'm not sure that's a, really have a motion, but a suggestion and direction to staff.
Only thing I'd like. Arts and Culture's already working on the Arts and Public Places program that.
The only thing I'd like to comment is on the construction. When you're excavating soil for a basement or a parking structure, subterranean, you have to excavate by clamshell taking it out, you have to put it into trucks that have to be adjacent to the street or the construction. There's absolutely no way around that. When you're pouring the concrete foundation, the columns, whatever, until you get up to the pedestal level, it's all concrete, as you saw in the Lex. Then you've got timber construction, it becomes much easier, but until you get that done, there's virtually no other way to do it. You could even go out to the 99 Cent Store on Sonora, and Sonora's closed down. You can't get through at all because they're jacking pipe underneath railroad tracks to put electrical lines in there, because we're upgrading the crossing at Sonora. And where do they take the earth out that's 20 feet down? They're setting it next to it, on the street. Where are they going to take the earth? It all has to be backfilled. So there's, I know from my experience, you always try to find the least expensive and the best way to do it without infringing on the public rights away, but sometimes it's just impossible to do. That's the case down there, I was, I was driving down there this morning for lunch, and yeah, you're right, the street is all blocked up because they're doing the garage, they're doing the apartments on Brand to Central, you're going to have that. I don't know any other way. Engineering can look at it, but they got enough cones and everything up, barricades to direct the traffic, so I don't know, Mr. Najarian, it's just one of those things, and I guess all I can say is this too shall pass. I'm just going to avoid that intersection for a, for a couple months. Okay, with that said, what's next, please?
Next at 5, under Consent Item, following the routine, it may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Onion.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Next, please.
Next item is Oral Communications, this is a three-minute event, community event announcement portion, we will have the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business, if I understand it, no cards or business.
I have no cards. Next, please.
Under Action Items, at 8 a.m. is General Manager of GWP regarding lockbox remittance processing service for GWP. 8 a.m. is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing Execution of an Amendment to Existing Contract with Regular Group LLC Extending the Contract to June 1, 2016, and Increasing the Amount by $216,000.
Thank you, Mr. Achoa.
Yes, so this is a three-year proposed extension of existing contract with Regular, who we've been working with since 1997, a contract amount of $72,000 a year. Rather than go out to bid, we're asking that we continue this for three years for a maximum increase of 216. If you have specific questions about the payment remittance process or the services provided, Tammy Vallier, our administrator, is here to answer those.
Any questions? Is there a motion? I have no cards.
I'll move 8 a.m.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
8 b.m. is Director of Community Development and Public Works regarding Brand Boulevard Parklet, a grant-funded project. 8 a.m. is a motion to note and file a report.
Thank you, Mr. Achoa.
Yes, sir, we recently received a grant, good news, a grant from Keep America Beautiful, I believe it was, and the idea was to create a little bit of green space on Brand Boulevard. Philip Esquindar, our program specialist, will give you the details of this received and filed report. Philip.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Philip Esquindar with the Community Development Department, and I'll give you a brief update on this program. We are calling this the Brand Boulevard Parklet Project, and it's a grant-funded open space, public open space project. Giving you a little bit of examples of what parklets are, if many of you are unfamiliar with the concept. Here you'll see on the top right, Los Angeles is parklet here in downtown Los Angeles on Spring Street. The bottom lower picture is that of a parklet located in Long Beach, and the one directly to the left is that of one in San Francisco. All three very different examples of spaces that were previously for traffic, mainly parking spaces, that are now converted into public open space in areas that are sparse of such space. They're converted into just this type of space where individuals can come and sit, gather, play games, enjoy lunch, enjoy a book, and just gather, work, there was no space before. A few more examples, this on the left is here in Highland Park in Los Angeles again, and the two on the right are also in San Francisco, just showing you examples of very different types of construction styles for these types of open spaces, modern as well as simple dining, outdoor dining tables. Just to give you a few key highlights about this project, it is a $20,000 grant funded completely through the Keep America Beautiful organization, a national organization that we here in Glendale are a part of. Day-to-day maintenance will be embraced and overseen by the Downtown Glendale Association, the Merchants Association here that was recently organized. They were so excited about this project that they offered this to us to help see this project through. The project will undergo a full evaluation by all the departments after a one-year pilot period to see if it in fact is meeting the goals that we are anticipating with economic development and with the open space usage and public's acceptance of that program. We anticipate construction to take place within the next month or so, and hoping to have it done by mid to end of July. Just to give you an understanding of the organizational collaboration that took place for this project to come to life, we at Community Development Department are, wrote the grant and brought this project as far as design, and will be overseeing the project throughout the course of the pilot year. Public Works was gracious enough to work with us and trust us that this is a positive impact on their parking, and will help us conduct studies throughout the course of the year to see if parking has in fact shifted in other places, and the revenue is not lost. Libraries, Altrin Cultures, this is actually a very unique point to this project. Libraries, Altrin Cultures, this is actually a very unique point to this project. It embraces this project through providing a mini free library concept. What it is, is that our parklet will provide space for a take-a-book-leave-a-book library where individuals can come and sit there, they can look through books, read it if they enjoy that book and want to keep it, they'll keep that book, and in return, they can leave a book of their own. So this, in essence, a free revolving library built into the parklet. One we do have already in Glendale on Grandview close by Brand Park. And the Community Services and Parks Department, because it is an open space project and they have experience with working with contractors, they will be helping us in construction and project management throughout the course of construction. And to bring you to where we have anticipated, we will be putting this particular project, it will be, yes, sir?
You put the street name on this.
Absolutely.
The one in the, our handout didn't have it.
My apologies.
I was trying to figure the street. It's okay, now I see California.
Perfect, there you are. It is on California and Brand on the southwest corner of Brand Boulevard, directly in front of, if you'll remember, there was a structure fire on the recent holiday. It's directly in front of the businesses there, starting from the bumpout south to four parking spaces. Well, let's go ahead.
Next question. We're going to lose four parking spaces there?
You'll lose, yes, sir, four parking spaces. We start from the bumpout, we take the remnant sliver of space there, three full spaces and the half of the fourth space, leaving half a space, so that vehicles can still have ample room.
How many total in the project? Are we going to tell us that?
Four.
This whole project, we're just voting to take four out?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Have the businesses weighed in that are, that it's directly in front of?
Yes, they're ecstatic about the project, actually, seeing what the other cities have embraced and the fact that this is something that we're implementing purely as an open space project to allow people, whether they're grabbing their coffee from up the street cafes, coming to sit there and read a book, and one of the caf, excuse me, the restaurant, the Sed Tea, the Thai food restaurant that it also is in front of, has proposed to potentially provide free Wi-Fi internet access to that site, so people could come sit there, grab their lunch, come outside and have a great afternoon. And this is our initial concept design. As you can see, we've created a very open space concept. That center space is roughly around 300 square feet of open space that provides for different types of programming. Fitness studio from across the street could come and host a yoga class there, the dance class that's now there could host a dance class for the public, we could have a library reading session, a poetry reading session, different types of community groups could come and host bicycling events there. During Glendale Healthy Kids, they could also host their canopies there and provide food there. It's a multi-purpose open space that anyone can use, putting dining room tables there if anyone would like at some point. All these, this left side that you see here provides stadium-style seating, three wooden bleacher steps, and the far table that you see in the back is a cantilevered community table that provides ADA access, so a wheelchair could also pull up to it and sit at the table and enjoy the table just as anyone else would. And I'll give you a view from the street, and you can see directly where it's proposed. Right in front of that bumpout coming down south, so it should bring some vital energy to that block that was unfortunately taken away by that fire and a block that needs activation and revitalization in the downtown core. And I'm open to any questions if you have any at this time.
Mr. Friedman.
Just, well, first, I really like the project.
Thank you.
I love the design. I'm very happy to see this come forward. Just one little suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is, if you want people to really sit for any period of time, to consider having seats that have backs, because a lot of people can't really sit in benches for very long with nothing to lean back on. I mean, personally, I find them very uncomfortable. So you, just something to think about, particularly for, you know, older people like me, you know, if you really want them to stay for more than five, 10 minutes, let them, give them something that's actually comfortable to sit in.
Absolutely, we'll incorporate. And wrap around, the entire bench structure here wraps around, it's a one large bench that wraps around.
Right, so is that something people can lean back on that's behind it? It's hard to see.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
This structure here, and it also provides for native, I forgot to mention, native drought-tolerant plant life to be planted around, along the entire exterior that you see here.
I didn't understand that from the rendering, so forget my comment, you've already done it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
What will the smoking rules be for those parklets?
The smoking rules will apply just as standard city smoking rules, there will be no smoking on this particular site, just as no any other park space in the city.
Okay, how about, how about loitering? How about homeless folks? We have several of them downtown. How about if they decide that it is an attractive spot?
Take up residence?
Take residence. And I know we, we've gone to great lengths to break up seating areas that are longer and width than a single seat. We've put armrests on our other benches. Do we have a plan to make sure that, that use of that is not abused? Certainly, they're allowed to use it, but we don't want them camping out there.
Absolutely.
So what sort of plan do we have with that?
This is kind of a multifaceted plan, and working with the Downtown Glendale Association, as you know, they have downtown ambassadors now that walk the streets and kind of, for lack of a better word, patrol and ambassador the area, the neighborhood. They'll be working to keep an eye on this project as well as the community policing organization from our police department, keep aware of it. And from this picture, if you can see, there is ambient lighting built in from around it. We're hoping that this ambient light will help deter at nighttime anyone that would like to do it, and the businesses are planning to embrace this so strongly that they will, if they see problems of that nature, they will come out and let the police department know, give a phone call. But we will be working on different things to make sure that that doesn't happen and this doesn't become that type of abandoned space.
And, and one more question, no adjacent business has any particular superior rights to use that. Let's say they wanted to seat people and chew others away, that's, it's totally public space, no business has any greater right to control it than any individual or just member of the public.
You're absolutely correct. At this time, this is a purely public space and will be conducted as so. So no one, none of the restaurants, they will be under the understanding that they are not to come out and provide service or food service to the people sitting there. If someone wants to grab their lunch and come and sit there on the Royal Code, accord they sure may can.
Can I ask a question about Mr. Najarian's question? I'm just curious what the law is, it's really a question for Mr. Garcia, if somebody wanted to sleep during the day on that, can you legally tell them you can't sleep there? Do we have to post something? What is, what is the rule in terms of loitering?
Well, loitering has an offense, is particularly hard to enforce under the code and the state laws, but there are a number of, we'd apply the same rules that we would apply to others, other public spaces, other rights of way. If they're violating the anti-camping ordinance, or they're violating any other of our quality-of-life ordinances, and those could be used to, to enforce on this particular space.
And oftentimes, what we end up doing is sending out Community Services and Parks case workers to areas where we do know we have issues with homeless, like we have in Central Park, and for folks that need assistance, we're able to get them assistance. We've had a good string of successes there at Central Park. And for those folks that are service-resistant, they get tired of being talked to by the case managers, and they ultimately move on someplace else. Seen all of that take place. So we would go about it with that multi-pronged approach.
And this is a one-year?
Yes, sir. It's being built as a modular one-year pilot so that at the end of the year, we can conduct an assessment, come back to you and see if we'd like to continue.
So if we have problems, we can address them.
Right, and if you decide that it is a positive impact in the community, we can develop a policy to implement more should funding from other private sources arise.
Got you. I do have, but Mr. Cando...
I think it's a very good idea. I'm very excited. We've seen this throughout LA, and we happen to have quite a few in New York. I think this is great, and hopefully we'll be able to do these little parklets in other locations there on Brand. The design itself, I find a little bit sort of spare. Let's just put it in, but maybe we can do something more than, and it seems like a vast empty space between the two places to sit. But overall, I think this is great. Forward to, not taking a nap, but maybe just relaxing on...
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I do have one card. If nobody else. Ry Berg, is it? I can't read your handwriting, sorry. It's your name for the record. Two minutes, two minutes.
My name is Ry Berg, I'm the Chair of Walk by Glendale, and I live in Montrose, and I just wanted to submit a letter of support for this project. We think it'll be great for activating the space downtown, and ever since we saw the first presentation on it, we, our minds have been cranking about how we might be able to offer bicycle safety classes or even bicycle repair classes in this space. So very supportive, and I'll submit these for the record, so thank you.
Thank you. Now, there's a motion to note and file.
I will move...
I'll second. Move, second, roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
We, Sonanya.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
We see a city attorney regarding City of Glendale response on March 25th, 2013, Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury report entitled Glendale Water and Power in Proposition 218 and 26. C one is a resolution approving a response and submission of the response to the civil grand jury.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. I'll be deferring to our city attorney, Mr. Garcia, but just by way of introduction, as you recall, we had somewhat unprecedented surprise earlier this spring with a wildly, in my view, irresponsible presentation of opinion as fact in the form of a civil grand jury interim report, as it was entitled. We have taken a very close look at the legal rationale and understanding applied by that report and found it wanting in very serious and significant ways. With that, I'll defer to Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will start by echoing Mr. Ochoa's comment that the report was significantly lacking and irresponsible in many ways, but let me give some background. In the fall last year, fall 2012, our office received an inquiry from a member of the civil grand jury. The civil grand jury is appointed, starting July 1st of every fiscal year, going to the following fiscal year, to look at governmental operations. They have the authority to conduct reviews or investigations of government operations, whether it's, you know, salaries or, or operations related to finance and those sorts of things. So we received an inquiry, the, the substance of the inquiry was that they had received a complaint that the city was transferring electric and water revenue in contravention of the California Constitution, specifically Proposition 26 and Proposition 218, as well as in contravention of our own charter. We provided, in response to the inquiry, we provided documents that they requested, including the report from 2011 in which our office recommended, due to the risks associated with Prop 218, that the city council discontinue the water, the transfer of water revenue, and, and the resolution that the council ultimately adopted discontinuing that water transfer. In addition, we provided a memorandum that our office had prepared, public memorandum as it related to electric rates and the transfer of electric revenue, operating revenue to the city's general fund. After that, providing that initial information, we met with members of the civil grand jury, staff did, Mr. Ochoa, myself, Mr. Zern, Mr. Elliott, and Ms. Godinez of my office. We met with five members of the civil grand jury. We provided our, our response on some of these issues as they had laid them out to us, and we explained that in our view that the Prop 218 was essentially a non-issue because we were no longer transferring water revenue, we discontinued that, that the electric and Proposition 26 issues were not yet ripe issues because the city had not adjusted electric rate revenue, electric revenues in the time since Proposition 26 had been enacted in November of 2010. We indicated to them that we were putting a ballot measure, you know, the council directed us to bring back a ballot measure to clarify the issue with, as it relates to the conflict between the calculation of operating revenue, or the transfer as a percentage of operating revenues, with the concept that that transfer was supposed to be made out of the surplus fund. They had indicated to us that they would await the results of the election and that, as they always do, prepare a report to, to us in June of this year. So we actually would be getting this report right about now. We didn't hear from them after that until March of this year, as you know. We received a two-day notice essentially that they were going to issue this report, and I'll go through the substance of it, but issued this report specifically in our view, as it related to the election on Proposition, or Measure B. Very specifically said that in their letter to, to us, and to, or I should say, in their memorandum to the Superior Court Judge who had supervision over the civil grand jury, that they were doing it specifically because they, they felt that their report was germane to the issues before the voters. In our view, that was an inappropriate action that they took, specifically tried to influence the outcome of our election. But in any event, we've, we've now prepared a response to, to the grand jury, and as required by law, we are asking that the council approve that response. And let me go through the, there are three findings in the report, and, and I hesitate to call them findings because they're not anything like findings, and they are three recommendations. So the first finding that the civil grand jury made was that the city, that the city took the position that Propositions 218 and Prop 26 do not apply to us, and we've never said that, we've never taken that position. In fact, with respect to Proposition 218, we discontinued, again, the water transfer because we were concerned about the risk. There's, I think there's still some arguments that it's not a Prop 218 issue, but we, out of an abundance of caution, my predecessor recommended to you that we discontinue it, and you, and you did that. With respect to water rates, when we adjusted water rates in 2012, we did a comprehensive cost of service analysis specifically to address Prop 218 concerns. With respect to Prop 26, again, we've never taken the position that that doesn't apply to the city. We haven't increased or adjusted electric rates since Proposition 26 was adopted, so we haven't had a chance to actually comply or not comply with it. So it's a little premature at this time for them to make that finding. One thing in the, in the, in the report that I wanted to point out, that I think a particularly egregious example of how light this report was, is that they made a finding that the city had made no effort to determine whether, what the city's infrastructures needed were, and whether or not the utility needed additional revenue that the, the transfer was taken away from. And this was particularly galling to us because, one, we had never been asked the question, not in meetings, not in, in letters to us, we'd never been asked, how do you look at this? How, what's the process for looking at this? And then secondly, of course, we do go through that process. We go through that process every budget year, every, every time at budget, every time we do a quarterly budget, we're looking at those issues. We've got, we could have given them voluminous reports and PowerPoints and study sessions on that issue. So I wanted to point that out. We've put that in the response because, again, I think it's indicative of a group of folks looking for a conclusion and filling in the dots after that. The second finding that they made was that, and again, I, we're kind of at a loss for some of these findings. The second finding was that the City of Los Angeles lost on this issue, making a similar argument, and that that case represents a trend in the law. That case involving the City of Los Angeles was a Proposition 218 case involving a transfer of water revenue. Again, we don't do that unless it's a cost-of-service-based transfer, and so we're, we're kind of at a loss to determine how that's applicable to us. And again, with respect to Proposition 26, at the time, we do bring in a proposed adjustment before you, there will be a comprehensive cost-of-service analysis that accompanies that proposal. And third, the third finding is that fiscal challenges do not justify ignoring constitutional requirements. We agree with that general statement, but we, we reject the implication that we are ignoring constitutional challenges, and again, I think we've gone through all the steps, both with respect to electric and water rate, water rates, to make sure that we're complying with those two constitutional provisions. With respect to the recommendations, the first recommendation is that we obtain an independent legal opinion regarding compliance with Propositions 218 and 26. Again, with respect to Proposition 218, we don't, we don't feel that that's necessary because we've, we don't have, we've, we no longer transfer water revenue that's not cost-of-service-based. And in addition, with respect to Proposition 26, we have, we have retained outside counsel who is working with us on the proposed rate adjustment. The second recommendation is that we hold, that the city hold a special election and obtain a two-thirds vote to justify or ratify our electric and water rates. Again, is for the reasons I've already explained, our, the position of our office is that such an election is not necessary. The water rates issue is a non-issue. Electric rates with, we, the main issue, I guess, the main argument is that the transfer will trigger a election. Our position and the position of experts that we consult in it is that the transfer is grandfathered because Proposition 26 is not retroactive as Proposition 218 is, and I, I think that's the key distinction that, that people lose sight of. And as a result, at such time as the, the city considers adjustments or increases in, in electric rates, our view is that a election will not be necessary to ratify those rates. The third recommendation is that the city identify additional sources of revenues. Our response is that we're always looking for additional sources of revenues, both for general fund and other funds, but we don't believe that it's necessary to discontinue the transfer related to the electric operating revenues. And so that's the response that we're putting together, it's in the, it's in the staff report, it's in the resolution, and we are asking council to approve the response that we could submit it. It's required to be submitted within 90 days of the interim report, and, you know, Mr.[1777.65] to be submitted within 90 days of the interim report, and, you know, Mr. Ochoa referred to it. First time that we know Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury has issued a interim report in the 30 years that they've been, you know, they've documented their prior reports. Again, very unusual, the process that they followed to get this report out, and we note that in the, in the response.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll submit.
I think we're all very aware of all the issues behind this, since, what, February, when we start talking about Measure B, everything that followed since then. Unless there's comments, I have two cards. I'd like to hear from the public. First speaker, Mike Mohill. Two minutes.
Mayor Weaver, in all due respect, I'm always under the impression that the agenda items are always three minutes unless we know in advance.
No.
Because some people like myself have prepared a three-minute speech.
I'm sorry.
A two-minute speech.
You're wrong on your assumptions. Two minutes.
Is that going to be the standard operating procedure from now on?
It varies. When I assign the minutes at an item, you're entitled to that amount of time. On this one, two minutes.
Mayor Weaver, there's only two speakers tonight who want to speak. There's not a
Two minutes. Take it.
I don't think that's fair.
Well, I do. You're losing your time. You're standing here debating me.
Well, it's important, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mohill, I'm not going to get into argument with you. I assigned two minutes.
Is this the Politburo of the Glendale City Council now?
If you do not want to speak, I'll have.
People have a right to speak. You told us we've had three minutes.
Sir Mayor, I just, I just let him, he's using his time as you suggested, Mr. Mayor.
I gave two minutes. That's my prerogative.
I'm not, Mr. Mayor, I'm not arguing, I'm not suggesting that you, you give him more. I'm suggesting he's on his time. If he wants to spend the two minutes arguing that he should have more time, then you should let him, you should let him use that time.
Mr. Mayor, I guess from now on, you definitely run the rules here, and the people who think that they can have three minutes, like it's always been over the years, it's now going to be two minutes. Is that because you don't want to hear from the public?
Mr. Mohill, have you been watching on TV since you haven't been here since I got elected? I've given a lot of issues here, three minutes. This one, two minutes.
But you're not consistent, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have to be consistent. Let the clock run. He's using his two minutes up. Is that what you said?
That's what I said. Just don't interrupt him.
Okay. But talk.
I'd like to thank the voters in the 2013 election voting no on Charter Amendments A, B, and C, and I would like to thank the voters very much for seeing that our city council was acting like a Politburo when they tried to do an end run, end run around voters' requests, the city charter, and Los Angeles County Grand Jury. The reason for all this transfer is to make sure that the city employees get their pensions and salaries and their transfer from the GWP to the general fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you are rude.
Next speaker, Harry Zavos.
My name is Harry Zavos, and the two minutes won't be sufficient to make even the minor point I wanted to make about the grand jury report. So instead of rushing it, make it not understandable, in which case it doesn't serve the interests of the people that are watching this program, I will defer my comments.
Thank you. I have no more cards. Mr. Cantaro.
And don't forget, Mr. Zavos, you can come back next week and speak at oral communications for five. Well, I've been waiting for Mr. Mohill to show up after his, I don't know whether to call it brashing, I don't know if that's the right word, but whatever took place at the, at the election. Mr. Mohill, you campaigned for way over a year, and all you talked about was this issue, the transfer, the salaries, and all the rest of it, the corruption and all the rest of it. And once again, you and Mr. Milano were soundly defeated. Your ideas and your concepts and your theories and all the rest of it, you were soundly defeated. So I just wanted to get on the record to make sure that everyone understands that in spite of all of the time that you spent at this podium, and Mr. Milano also, the fact is that the overwhelming majority of the residents and voters of this city said, no, no, they're not accurate in their observations and comments. Now, in terms of the grand jury report, yeah, I find it fascinating that this is the first time they've done this in 30 years, and it's not so unusual that civil grand juries, criminal perhaps quite a bit less, but that civil grand juries are used for whatever, you know, political theory or, or causes that the DA and others want to institute. But I think we're well within our rights to do what we do with Glendale Water and Power. As I've said for many, many years, it's not an isolated, private-for-profit company. It is an integral part of this city, just like the police department and the parks and the library and the rest of the organizations here. This one happens, thank God, to provide a profit. Thank God that we're not having to rely on Southern California Edison. Just read the fiasco down in Santa Nobria, so many other fiascos they've had throughout the years. Water, Glendale Water and Power provides a tremendous service to this city, and yes, it happens to make money for us, and that's used to provide services for the rest of the organization. And no, it doesn't go directly into salaries and benefits, as Mr. Milano and, and Mr. Mohill have stated all of these years. So it is what it is. I think the response is more than adequate, and I don't really believe any thing is going to come of it, but whatever it is, the response is there.
You have comments, Mr. Jarian?
I think the response that the city attorney has prepared for us, on its face, does address the findings of the civil grand jury. However, it still leaves to question a much larger and more troubling, a much more troubling issue, and that is the involvement of a governmental body directly into the elections of our municipality, which I find to be a gross misconduct on the part of the grand jury. The same rules that the city plays by, such that we are prohibited from putting up billboards and advertising our position and distributing it on the city's dollar to the members of the public who are voting on a referendum issue, should be followed by the grand jury, because the grand jury is a creature of the county of Los Angeles and the court system, the Superior Courts of California administered by the L.A. County Courts, is a gross level of misconduct. It is grand jury misconduct. And to simply address the issues of, well, it's not a, it's not a transfer, and Prop. 218 and 26 should or should not apply, doesn't really get to the egregiousness of their actions. Now, I really think we, as a city, need to take a much firmer step and have this not only investigated by, but investigated by a proper body. Query, how can a Los Angeles Superior Court Judge, who has presumably given a copy of the, the grand jury findings, and explicitly in the document, it says it, "We want to get this out to the press and to the public because that city of Glendale, they have an election in," what was it, seven days or 10 days? A very short period of time. For that judicial officer to approve that for release, I think is judicial misconduct. Now, who's going to investigate that? Another grand jury? No. I think it has to be an appropriate authority with independence from the L.A. County system, and I think we have to contact the Attorney General to conduct an investigation because this time it was Glendale. Next month, or next time, it's going to be another municipality. And for this to occur is absolutely wrong. Unless we stand up as a municipality, as an independent form of government, and protest and object to the overreaching and illegal actions by the grand jury, the civil grand jury, and the inappropriate actions by the L.A. Superior Court Judge that approved that for release, then this is going to continue, and it's going to continue, and it's going to continue. Let's stand up. Let's make us stand, and let's see if their actions were right or wrong. And if they're wrong, there must be redress. They should be at least charged with the cost of letting us have another election on this. We spent a lot of money, at least in the printing of those ballot arguments. There were hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city put forth. Those are our damages in this, in this case, let alone the mere fact of the appropriate separation of powers that currently exists and the rules against a government agency campaigning with taxpayer money. That's taxpayers' money. When we talk about a government getting involved and the civil grand jury getting involved, that is taxpayers' money at the end of the line. I think we should, we should really stand firm and object in the strongest manner and complain to the highest authorities that have jurisdiction over this to let them know what was done and that it should never be done again, and those who are at fault for this should be reprimanded.
I agree.
Mr. Sananian.
Mr. Garcia, just for my own edification. So was the grand jury issuing an opinion, does that contain some kind of illegal activity? Is that, is that our position? And what is the legal act?
The position that we've taken, something, you know, I do have to agree with Mr. Jarian. I'm not sure that regarding the judge's decision, I agree, I disagree with it, but I'm not sure it's subject to investigation. But the position, the position that we have, and I feel pretty strongly about this, and it's funny because I've talked to other municipal attorneys about it, and you tell them the story and they can't believe it, is that they released this deliberately, in my view, to affect the outcome of the election. It's in the letter to the judge that we believe that this letter, that this report is germane to the issues that are in the election. The, the, the report's only critical, so there's only one conclusion that you can come with, that of what the, what the grand jurors thought that the voters should do with this. I think there's some pretty strong case law to suggest that this is an unlawful use of public resources for electoral purposes, and that's, that's what Mr. Jarian was getting at. The, the law says that, you know, besides saying, "Vote for this" or "Don't vote for this," you can't spend public resources on a document where the tone, tenor, and timing of it is such that it exudes an advocacy piece. And that's, that's our view. The tone of it was, you know, the city did nothing right here. The timing of it was deliberate, not only right before election, but deliberately timed in conjunction with our election. And for those reasons, we've, and we've noted that in the report, that we do believe that it's, the timing of it was certainly suspect. As far as what our remedies are, I think there's, that's open to debate at this point, given that it's already, it's already been done. With respect, if I may, to Councilmember Jarian's comment, I, I'm not sure that, you know, just speaking frankly, that what, what the Attorney General would do upon a request from this, but something that we can follow up with. Again, I don't feel that the trial judge, who was the supervising judge for the criminal court, committed any misconduct. I do believe she got the, she was wrong on the law, but we disagree with judges all the time. But that doesn't mean I don't believe that there was judicial misconduct. But I do believe that, you know, again, the way that this was presented was contrary to the law. It was a use of public resources for campaign purposes. We might have some remedies there, that the council wants to direct, as part of this, to direct our office to come back with something. We can do that. We certainly, as part of civil litigation, our civil litigation remedies is something we can bring to the council separately from this report, but.
I know. Second question. So procedurally, we file our response
Yeah.
to the grand jury, and what happens then?
Not a whole lot. What they do is they get our response. They, they put it together with the report, and then that's, that's the final report. And they post it on the website, and it's there for in time immemorial. That's pretty much it. There, we wouldn't have an opportunity to challenge it legally, to say it's, in fact, that's kind of what we did previously. We wouldn't have that opportunity. There would be no basis to, to bring a subsequent challenge. Essentially, it gets, gets filed with the, with the report, and that's it. That's the final report.
So neither the report nor our response has any legal force? I mean, it's not binding on anyone. It's not producing a particular result?
No.
I think if you look back at the, on election night, the absentee ballots that came in favored Measure B. Left only to the absentee ballots that were cast prior to the remittance, the release of the report, Measure B passed. Where Measure B went down was at the polls in the wake of this, again, in my view, very misguided report.
Okay. What I'd like to say, I'm no authority on grand juries, et cetera. I don't pretend to be. But standing as an outsider looking in, my 17 years on council, there's been a few times that I've been asked to nominate a person to serve on the grand jury, and I've done so. One that comes to mind is a lovely lady who was active in the community, housewife, whatever. She served on the grand jury. And I take it to mean that the people that serve on the grand juries are just ordinary people. They're not high-priced attorneys sitting in legal judgment. They only know what is presented and they come up with a conclusion. In this case, the staff, I'm the one that brought up Measure A. Staff brought up Measure B and C to clean up charter language. We tried to present it that way. Then one person, one person out of 194,000 people said we were wrong. And that one person, in my mind, deviously, goes to the grand jury and says, "Hey, man, look what they're doing. I'm a professor of law. Listen to me." And they did. And they, and the only grand jury in 30-some years issues an interim report before an election. You know, it doesn't talk, take a lot of brain cells to figure out what's going on. That one person wanted things their way. Measure B lost. Ha ha. I was right. Do you know what has changed since that failed? Not a blasted thing in this city. We're continuing to do the same thing. Want a messy language in the charter? Well, it's going to stay there. But nothing has changed. Transfer's going to continue, just like the founding fathers wanted it to be. So I'm just, as my colleagues, I'm very frustrated that one or two people in this whole city tried to hold the city hostage. And I give only two minutes for the same people to get up and knock us again? Forget it. We've heard it all. You got your two minutes. We're responding to the grand jury, not the public. The public isn't going to change the language in the letter going to the grand jury, which will do nothing other than get in a file somewhere. But I think we ought to do something with the state or whatever, because if a interim grand jury, this particular ones that serve for a year, starts this trend of grand juries getting involved in local politics and before-election stuff and giving their opinions, we're heading down a very slippery slope. We ought to do everything we can to prevent that from occurring ever again in the future. So I hope we can do something to prevent this from happening again. Just unbelievable. Not in my whole life have I seen anything like that. With that, there's a motion to note and file the report. Nothing more.
Okay, I'll move the item, but I do want the city attorney to follow up to see what the options are.
You've got three.
We can do that.
At least three.
And just for the record, it's not a motion to file it. It is a resolution approving our response.
Oh, wait. I'm, I'm sorry. I liked the one, but see, I'm upset.
I'll make that.
C1.
Second.
Move to second. Sorry about that, folks. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Cantaro?
Yes.
Sananian?
Uh, no.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Send it immediately. Okay, what is?
Included that, did we give direction then to the city attorney to come back with?
I can bring it back, but if you want to move, then, that, make a motion that I bring back options on challenging the grand jury's, the timing of their release.
That's what we're talking about.
Make that motion. Second.
Okay. We got it.
Well, let's make, I need a vote. The motion is.
Options on what we can do to prevent any grand jury in the future, not just for this city, but for anywhere within our, the state of California, for any interim reports that should never be done in the first place. It's getting way too political. That's a politicized grand jury. Okay.
Are you clear on that?
Yeah.
Is that a, is that a motion?
Well, it's just that placing something on the agenda.
No, we're just saying, it's going to go on the agenda. You can vote either way after. Okay?
I support that.
I support that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. And that's just giving direction.
We've got it.
It's set, it's on. Okay. I think we all want it. Next, please.
Your hearings at 9:00, as Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding proposed city of Glendale budget and citywide fee schedule for fiscal year 2013-2014.
Mr. Chau.
Yes, sir. We have for you a thorough yet abbreviated relative to the other presentations we've seen, budget presentation for you here tonight. As you know, in our process, we do this in two steps. You have the...
Yeah, he's getting that.
This is what we will be presenting in tandem from, thank you, from Mr. Elliott and myself, going through the process recap, talk about your priorities, principles of compensation management. Mr. Elliott will do the fund recap, general fund recap, summary appropriations, new fees and increases by way of recap, and then GWP with some final conclusionary comments for this, the public hearing. As I say, we are here at this level, at the June 11 public hearing. The next step would be the June 25 budget adoption. But I think the part that's as important, if not more important, are the hours and hours and hours of meetings that the council has held over the month of May getting to this point. Just by way of starting us off, you probably have grown tired of hearing me say it, but I think that the folks at home and the folks in the audience certainly need to understand that the council sets the tone. Those policy statements, those comments that you make reverberate outside of this chambers and out on the street and out in the market. And so to the extent that the council has a vision of what it wants to see, it is our job, the staff, to execute those plans and deliver that vision to you. So you do indeed set the framework for all of the operations that we have. In doing so, we provide to you two distinct sets of concepts as part of this budget, in addition to the quantitative numbers and spreadsheets that you have grown very familiar with. And that is our department strategic goals. These are the outcomes that we look for, for each one of our line departments, including stretch goals. But basically, these form the scorecard for our departments and for our operations. And those are backed up with key performance indicators. Those are the tactical measures, so that the council is assured and the community is assured that we have a balance between the big ideas and big outcomes, as well as the day-to-day operations and the outputs in terms of books checked out, potholes filled, arrests made, and all the other things that go along with operating a $700 million a year corporation. What you have are, here are the council priorities. These are the foundational types of statements that the council looks upon. You use these in terms of evaluating both the city attorney and myself, as well as the operations of all of our departments. I would point out to you, the ones that continually seem to come up in my conversations with council and in your comments here in front of the public are fiscal responsibility, meaning that we need to progress towards not just operational balance, but structural balance, safe and healthy community, that our residents feel safe in their homes, in their neighborhoods, and that we take steps to make sure that the community is a well-community. Economic vibrancy is our business plan that helps pay for all of this and a means of keeping the tax burden as light as absolutely possible by drawing new revenue through business activity. Infrastructure and mobility critically important, as was pointed out earlier, because this is the meat and potatoes of what any city delivers to its residents. And then also arts and culture, because it is important that we provide services for the entire person, for the whole resident. And in doing so, you saw just tonight this notion of a parklet, not just the physical structure that the open space provides as a mini park on Brand Boulevard, but also the gathering space, the things that can happen there. We take great pride in making sure that we have those services, facilities, and programming for all of our residents. Because we spend a considerable amount of our general fund revenue, our target is to keep it below, or to keep it at 75%, not above 75%, keep the amount that we pay for personnel at that target level. It's important to note that we are a service industry, and so managing our compensation costs, our personnel costs, is one of the main indicators of how well we're performing. And so council, this is your second year of considering these as your principles of compensation management. As you see here, we strive to balance the fiscal responsibility with attracting quality city personnel. We know that there is a balance and that the people provide the services, and having good people generally means good service, and we are able to balance those two forces. We do look for compensation to be funded and secured, not using one-time money for multi-year expenses. We do intend to calibrate compensation for the market. We want to make sure that we are attracting the best and brightest. We have a strong esprit de corps here in Glendale, but we match that merit against our fiscal realities, and every now and again, it's important to calibrate to that market. We do look at making sure that we have equity among all of our employees and our employee groups, so that we are investing in the right kinds of positions that speak to the future of our business, again, as a service industry. As I noted earlier, we do look to make sure that in doing all the normal, good government types of steps of making sure that we operate in a moral, ethical, professional way, but that we also look at, out at five-year horizons, and look at our actuarial horizons in dealing with PERS. And again, insist on reality and confronting the brutal facts of what the pressures are in delivering a quality workforce and quality services to the residents. We do target 75% as the general fund limit of what we will spend on personnel. That's not a hard cap, but it is our target. And then also, and something we've had great success on during the reorganization this last 18 months, is streamlining the organization so that management, as a percentage of that overall workforce cost, is less than 25%. At this point, we're well less than 20%. And then lastly, making sure again that we anticipate all of the complete cost of our compensation factors, and so that there are no surprises for this council or future councils as we go forward. With that as a preamble to the way that we approach the budget, Mr. Elliott, we'll walk you through the general fund recap.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to bring to you a general fund balanced budget, and the slides you have seen, most of them in the past, so I will run through them fairly quickly. But wanted to recap the general fund position for this coming fiscal year of 1314. As we start off, as we normally do, our beginning number, we make all the adjustments to the revenue resources. As we go through the different categories, we end up with the variances, the increases and decreases in those categories. This year, our ending balance was about a million too short, and with your direction, we are using the excess property tax that we received this year to fill the resource. So with that, we have $170 million in resources in the general fund. Offset, looking at the appropriation side, we have $165 million where we started with the differences that we programmed in the budget, salary increases, PERS increases, and other changes to our medical insurance, we're all programmed in. In addition to the changes we made in maintenance and operations and capital outlay, we added in the cost of the traffic signals and streetlights into Public Works this year. All told, with the addition of the retirement incentives that were authorized last year for the early retirements, we have proposed appropriations of $170 million. Again, with a balanced budget. So looking at the total appropriations citywide, to recap by fund type, we have the general fund as we went through the differences between this year and last year. We've looked at and gone through in detail all the special revenue funds. Again, those are funds that are specifically designed for accounting, for revenue sources, primarily federal grants like CBPG or Section 8. Those are all separate funds within special revenue funds. Debt service funds, we set those up for the payment of debt. As you know, the COPs that we brought to you recently to restructure, that is a debt service fund. Capital improvement funds, we set those up to account for all the projects we have. We went through in detail all the different projects, excuse me, in all the different categories. So our capital project funds for the government side of the House are $15 million a share, and I'll show you the details of those. Enterprise funds, the ones that operate like a business, we do the accounting for it, very much similar to the private sector. Those would be electric, water, refuse, sewer, and the Parks Enterprise Fund. The lion's share of our total budget, $364 million for this year. And then the internal service funds, we spent quite a bit of time talking about workers' comp and our insurance funds. Those are internal funds that operate, again, like enterprise funds, except the only customer is ourselves. We set those up to centralize costs in order to track those and better manage them and charge ourselves, the user departments, for those services within the city. All said and done, our total budget that we're proposing for 1314 is $737 million, almost $738 million. As we move forward in the summary of personnel changes, last year, we had authorized personnel of 1,605. You can see the differences as we've itemized them out, primarily reductions in fire and water and power. We now have authorized count of 1,588. As you recall, and we've showed the slide early on in the process, through, I think, the last 15 years, we peaked at almost 2,000 employees, I think around 2,004 and 2005. So that's a significant reduction in staffing over that time. Just in the last couple of years, we've dropped about 175, 180.
1112, we were 1,842.
Quite a few, quite a few. So looking at the general fund by department, you've seen these slides in the past, but we've itemized each department's proposed budget and compared it to last year and the variances throughout. Some of the notable variances, community development, we've shifted economic development to the Management Services Department. The increase in the Fire Department was primarily the COLA that was due to the GFFA. And most of the other departments, as we move forward, have very little increases, except for Public Works. Again, that was the traffic signals and streetlights that were added into this year. So all said, again, the differences between last year and this year were $5 million for total appropriations of $170 million. Going through the fund types, again, I mentioned the capital, or the debt service funds. Again, this is the police building project, that's the certificates of participation. This is where we account for the money where we pay the debt service on the police building. Capital leases, this is the last payment on the municipal services upgrade, municipal services building upgrade that we had a lease on, so that's the last payment on this. So you can see the total for 1314 in that category. The capital improvement funds for the general fund, we went through all the different projects in detail. This is the new money that we have added in for this year in the projects. As you recall, the community service in parks, that's primarily the Pacific Edison retrofit is programmed in for this year. All said and done, the total capital improvement fund is 8.8 million, and of course, that includes transfers where we move some of that money out to the landfill closure fund, and we went through that in detail. The gas tax fund, again, that's a fund that's set aside from state gas tax revenues, it can only be spent on limited items such as streets, gutters, and so on and so forth. And that's, proposed budget is $6 million. Parks mitigation, that's development impact fees that we receive, implemented by the city, and we have projects of $600,000. Primarily, I believe, that's Stengel Field and the Fremont Park projects. Again, by categories, this is the...
All right, Bob, you just go back one, just to make sure we point out for council and for community, because so much gets discussed with respect to the, again, the service side of our business, the people's side. But still, considering the impacts of the recession and the challenges placed on the city by the state of California and the general economy, still a very robust capital improvement program by way of our infrastructure maintenance, again, something council has stated was critically important to them, and you're seeing it play out here in terms of the projects, both in the current fiscal year as well as the coming fiscal year 1314. You'll see the same as we get to GWP for a total, I believe, of about $150 million worth of infrastructure improvement over the coming several years.
And to put an explanation on that, we showed this again in detail, but the proposed projects for this year and the existing money, there's, of the existing projects that were ongoing, about $33 million for this upcoming year to be programmed for various capital projects. Moving into the enterprise funds, I mentioned, those are the funds that operate like businesses, fee for service. You can see again what the proposed appropriations are in those various funds, the Recreation Fund, which Parks and Rec operates, a lot of the programs through that fund. The Parking Fund, clearly what that is about, Parking Services and Structures, the Sewer Fund, the Refuge Fund, Electric Revenue and Depreciation Funds, as we know, those are the funds denoted in the charter. And then water, both water funds, and then the Fire Communication Fund, that's the Verdugo Communication Center that operates and provides communication services for a number of contract cities throughout the region. All said, the enterprise appropriation proposed for next year is 364 million, slight increase over, or sizable increase over last year, and we have gone through that in detail. Internal Service Funds, we have a number of internal service funds that we've talked about, just to highlight some of the ones, fleet, again, that's where we house all the costs of maintaining the vehicles and the replacement of vehicles for the governmental funds. Joint Helicopter Fund, you'll see a sizable increase, that is programmed for the purchase of a new helicopter as we move forward into next year. ISD, there's Infrastructure Fund that pays for all the gears and switches and machines that we use, Applications that pays for the software and all the maintenance thereof in that respect. Our Unemployed Insurance Liabilities Fund, we talked about that for insurance purposes, Workers' Compensation Insurance, what we have to ensure the health and safety of the employees. All our various benefit funds, medical insurance, vision employees, RHSP, and so on and so forth. So in the Internal Service Fund, proposed budget of almost $93 million. Moving into new fees, I won't go through these because we hit quite a few of these going through, but I wanted to give you the highlights of some of the ones that we had discussed. The back-to-business registration fee of $5,000 is a new fee that we had gone through.
But you know, just because of the size of it, and just to reemphasize, this is our building division working with private industry to certify their own engineers, their own architects, and systems people, so that in case of emergency, while our folks are going around and working on perhaps higher priority red-tagged buildings and structures, we can get these businesses who are self-certified to be able to open up in a safe manner for themselves and their employees, to improve the resiliency of the community and the business community overall. So something that Stuart Tom and his folks should be very proud of.
And something that's voluntary.
Certainly.
To point out, this is a voluntary program.
That's correct.
With that, and I feel to mention, if you do have questions on these, on any of these fees, please, please ask. But again, just to highlight some of these various fees that we are proposing for this year, the traffic analysis at $1,000, the business registration renewal, so on and so forth. Traffic analysis and projects, the various trip loads, $2,000, and so on and so forth. The request of the library, renting out the library, rates for six-hour minimum, and so on and so forth. The, again, more library fees that have been proposed as we go through. And then the dining permits that were gone through and what those are at this point. Those had been discussed, I believe, earlier in the month. The council has already seen those and approved those, but we thought we'd bring those forward since they are new fees.
The idea being that we're presenting the fee schedule to you that you had a separate study session on?
Proposed in terms of the smoking, you can see those, those have been, were discussed in the different smoking areas, amplified sound permits, those for outdoor events where noise, or speakers are being used, so those have been proposed. Increases, technology surcharge, we talked about that. Council recommended that we go to the 18%, or 18.3%. Some of the other fees that are going, just being raised and/or corrected. Some of those corrections here... Some of those corrections here were proposed by the building department, this one being of note, there was an error on the previous schedule, but we wanted to note that. Parking, preferential parking, I believe those were discussed in different sessions, increases in those throughout the various categories. Sidewalk dining permit, it is no, we don't always raise fees, these are significant reduction at council's direction on the outdoor dining permits. Other changes, these were just date changes that were noted, but we wanted to at least include those in the hearing with various fees that have been brought to us from community And lastly, all the miscellaneous fees that are subject to CPI, again, there's about 1,600, 1,700 fees within our fee schedule. Those that are subject to CPI increases are 2%, so that will be programmed in on the various fee increases. With that, I'll move on to recapping Glendale Water and Power. We had shown you in the past what the, what the proposed revenues were for the electric and water utility, proposed appropriations, the asset capitalization is the capital amounts that we put into the balance sheet every year and giving you by way of estimating what the fund balance will be at the end of June of 2014. As we had discussed earlier, the capital improvement, there is a, as we have shown and gone through in detail in the study sessions, a five-year plan for both electric and water. This recaps the five-year plan for the electric utility and staged throughout the next five years totaling $94 million. And within water, the five-year plan and the various categories moving out, the five years is $40 million.
So at this point, as I say, we are at the budget hearing. We will be before you in two weeks of budget adoption. And then just looking ahead, as you know, we've gotten into the custom of bringing back quarterly updates and adjustments and performance indicator reports and organizational profile reports for the council to make your assessments as to our intermediate-range progress. And so you see that in November and you see it in February for the mid-year. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention and at least emphasize that the council's priorities and the department's strategic plans were part of the, I believe, the budget presentation, budget study session number three, I'm sorry, number four, including all the KPI dashboards. And at that point, we had provided to council all the departmental strategic goals on, in addition to what was just presented on the screen. You all have the complete list, and based on the comments and suggestions of council, up to, and up to the, most recently, a request to add one more strategic goal to the Department of Community Development relating to a historic survey as a response to some of the development that's going on in the general commercial districts of Glendale, that those are fungible lists of, again, scorecards, and we measure how we do based on our achievement satisfaction of those goals. Thus, as we look ahead to the 1314 budget, we are going to continue to refine our process and our view of budgeting as we go, make adjustments on the run, if you will. We've talked a bit about this notion of expenditure control budgeting, in essence, allowing some degree of flexibility at the executive level and hopefully unleashing increased creativity, innovation by the department overall, and giving the departments more control over what they spend, how they spend, presuming that they meet the strategic goals and they meet their key performance indicators. So the idea being that what the council is setting out are broad policy statements as to what you want to see in terms of outcomes and outputs, those are our targets and our goals, and it's up to the staff to figure out how to satisfy that direction from the city council. And so in doing so, what we'll be looking at is refining the budget policies and processes that Bob Elliott's team and Jason Bradford and his folks put through all the different departments as we go through the quarterly updates and quarterly reports, and at the same time, try to streamline as much as possible to allow decision-making at the lowest possible levels in order to make every member of our team a little bit more efficient and thus keep the management functions as streamlined as possible. Lastly, we will be, I believe we've elevated our five-year financial forecast that we presented to the council in the second budget study session to a new high of both accuracy and being conservative, but not overly conservative, being realistic in what the assessment is for the future, and we will continue to do that on a rolling basis so that the council will consistently have a good view, or as best a view as we can muster, both in the foreground and on the horizon. In the end, I would just leave you with the notion that, as you've heard me say before, we do believe fiscal stability is on the horizon, and we will begin focusing on that structural balance. You saw that in our five-year financial forecast, being able to hit everything on that to-do list and still be able to provide a exceptional quality of life for our residents and businesses. The idea is to refine our business processes, to make everybody a little bit more functional, a little bit more efficient, because as you saw earlier, we have fewer bodies to spread that work over, and at this point, the council certainly has not given direction that we are going to take our foot off the gas with respect to the level of service that we provide to residents. Good news, bad news is that we do have operational balance, that we are experiencing economic growth. The bad news is that we will continue to be frugal because, if for no other reason, we absolutely have to be. We are continuing to adapt the organization. This current year is the evaluation year, and the coming year truly is our new baseline year. So with that, we'd be happy to try and answer any questions the council might have. All of your executives and their key management staff are in the audience, and I'd be remiss if I did not call out the finance team, as well as all of the budget liaisons and all of our departments, for special recognition for putting this together. Our second budget together has been even more improved in terms of process, I hope you would agree, than the first time through, and it's really a credit to their hard work, working weekends, nights, and everything in between.
So noted, Mr. Friedman.
First, let me thank staff for all of their hard work, and I know there are a lot of different departments and a lot of people who put a lot of time into doing this report and a series of study sessions that we've had, and so I want to thank everybody for what was, I think, a very informative and very clear presentation throughout these last few months, particularly you, Mr. Ochoa, for a new guy, I think you're catching on pretty quick. And I think that the way that management services, you and Ms. Beers and Mr. Elliott, you know, really spearheaded this was an improvement over previous years, so I thank you for that. I was very glad to hear you mention a historic survey. This is something that I've been talking about for several years now, and I do think that now that we're coming out of our fiscal crisis, it's time for us to consider at least putting some money into trust at this point, even if it doesn't fund a full survey. I do believe that we can probably use that money to leverage private money in terms of perhaps donations from the Glendale Historic Society and their members to do a full survey. And what I'm suggesting is not the entire city at this point, but perhaps our commercial areas, which is where I do think we have holes, and not just commercial buildings, but residential buildings that are in commercial areas that might be under stress for development. And I do think that it's not just that it's a good thing to do to protect our historic resources, but that it's something that's good for business, because it will give developers a little bit more confidence in their purchases and knowing that they will or will not run into opposition from the Historic Society and also just from the EIR process. And on the other hand, it will give, of course, the preservation community the chance to work with staff to really identify the properties that we believe are really worth saving. Along the same lines, I think we have, we have surveys, for instance, in our downtown area, and there are a lot of structures that are listed as being potentially significant. But we need to all sit down, I think, with the preservation community and really pick those buildings that we think are particularly important, that are sort of the best buildings, so that we don't constantly run into problems. That's aside from the budget, but I do think that at this point, allocating some money towards, and I don't know what that amount is, you know, you'll figure that out, but some money towards a commercial survey, because it's good for our historic resources and good for development in the city, is something that I very much support, and I'm glad to hear you mention it. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and I do have a card. Would you like to hear from the public before any more comments? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Speaker Mike Mohill, three minutes.
Mayor Weaver, how many minutes did you say, please?
Three.
Three, okay, thank you. Good evening, council members and the viewing audience, my name is Mike Mohill. It is that time of year when city manager and city council will tell the public they have done their homework, spending hours in preparing for the next budget. Now council will be asking public comment and approval. Will this council do their homework or rely on the city manager and staff to do it for them? I recall when Mayor Dave Weaver and council members Najarian and Quintero were on council in July of that year, they approved over $8 million in salary increases for our city employees. However, the $8 million salary increases were not funded, because six months later, city manager Jim Starbert said he, "We needed to cut city services by $10 million in order to balance that budget." The $8 million pay raise, in effect, was paid by the Glendale residents doing without expected city services. Additionally, the pay raise had a ripple effect on future pension and benefit obligations that we, the taxpayers, have had to fund by increases in water and electric rates, permit fees, dog fees, skate park fees, bonds. And Mr. Weaver, Mr. Najarian, you were involved with that, weren't you, in 2008, because you approved that budget? And now our city manager is talking about a parcel tax next year to fund our libraries, and the list goes on. According to the staff report, pension costs will increase by as much as 50% by fiscal year 2019. Let me repeat myself, please. Pension cost will increase by as much as 50% for fiscal year 2019, and struggling families, small merchants, folks on limited income, disability income, and social security will be paying for those $100,000 lifetime pensions. We need to terminate our commitment to CalPERS. We, the taxpayers, currently guarantee this corrupt organization 7.5% in their investments, and this must end. Bankruptcy, folks, is just around the corner. If going forward, we do not place future city employees on a 401K plan and social security, just like the folks who paid the bills. Unfortunately, I do not see our city council members willing to terminate our relationship with CalPERS, since we just re-elected council members Freeman and Najarian, who are both beholden to the unions for campaign contributions. As they say, folks, we get the government we deserve. When the public had an opportunity in April to vote out of office the two incumbents, they chose not to do so. God bless this city. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing.
Well, once again, this is what we've heard for years now.
Yeah, what the heck does that have to do with the budget?
I just want to make the point again, that that was presented to the people of Glendale ad nauseam. Mr. Mohill campaigned for one year at least, up and down the city, talking to countless people, and his ideals were soundly rejected. And there must be something positive about what this staff is doing and what the elected council members are doing, because people in Glendale certainly seem to be happy to be living here and happy with their municipal government.
Just amazing, what Mohill said had nothing to do with the budget. He gave the same lecture he's given us for a year. Homework, let's see, how many study sessions do we have?
We have four.
Where are study sessions, and where was Mr. Milano? Here. Where was Mr. Mohill? Nowhere.
Worth noting that, sir, that the average per is pension for our employees is less than half of that $100,000 amount, because most folks--
Sure. You pick the highest-paid, longest-serving, and you try to sell the public that that's what everybody's getting. My, 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 how old that line's getting. Are there any of the comments? I'd just like to say one thing, if there aren't, and that is how much I respect and how proud I am all the city staffers that are here. Had a quarter of eight in the evening, got off lucky, only one speaker. You know, I know, we all know that you're doing it with less staff all around, and you're still producing a quality product. I'm so very proud of you as a lifelong resident of this city. Thank you so much for your service. I'm sorry you have to put up with that crap that comes in here. But maybe someday, if we're lucky, they won't come again. So, if we're so lucky. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
I just want to also compliment Mr. Ochoa, Spears, and our top light financial--
Right in the front row.
Credit to the staff.
Well, yeah, and the staff, not just your boss and the staff. But no, I thought the budget presentation, all of the different sessions that we had were excellent. I think it was much less fluff and more focused on, on the numbers and what we hope to accomplish.
Let me ask one other question. Mr. Elliott, how late do some of these people stay during the work, in all this preparation?
I'm embarrassed to say--
Midnight?
Very late hours, during budget season, eight, nine o'clock most every night, oft until Michelle was sending out emails last week at 11:30, so--
Oh, God. Do you understand what we're saying here? Putting countless hours in, and a jerk like that comes in here and says that, hey, we're not doing a homework, we're not doing anything. These people do the homework, and we hear it and we evaluate, we have questions we ask. If we don't, we accept. The city's what, 100 and, almost 110 years old, something like that now, and it's still running like a fine-tuned clock. We're one of the best financially set cities in the state of California, if not the best. To have a few people get up and criticize it, gosh, unbelievable, unbelievable.
No name-calling history. No name-calling.
Okay, I'll quit. Let's vote, is there a motion on 9A?
I will move 9A. Second.
Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinonian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, I'm sorry, staff are carrying on, but I get upset at some of this stuff. I'm not going to hold back. I only got another year, then you'll be rid of me. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. See manager mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Speaker Margaret Hammond? Yeah, I said jerk.
Do me, your honor, members of city council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, a long-time resident of Glendale, and always thought it was a wonderful city to live in and hoped to stay here until they carried me out in a box.
Same here.
Or towed me up to Forest Lawn or whatever.
Same here.
Okay. The free bulky item pickup, please, please call. There's still numerous items all up and down Boynton and Palmer and Cypress, all those streets in there. The people are not phoning to get their items picked up. They'll just turn it into a junkyard if you keep leaving all those couches and furniture and junk laying all about. Now, I do have something to say. Number one, I would like to say about veterans, I think that everybody, we know that Mr. Quintero has been involved in relief and so forth for veterans, for the good of the veterans. I would like to say, I know a few call him, he'll be very happy to put you on the track of who to volunteer, where to volunteer, where you can help our veterans. Now, on January the 5th, a letter in the news press forum made my American blood boil. The letter was from an immigrant who came here in the 80s, and he was complaining about letters that were protesting the election of Mr. Sinonian. And after all, is that not our-- And after all, is that not our right under the First Amendment to be able to protest? But then he goes on to complain that he has been discriminated against by, quote, "original inhabitants" of the city of Glendale, and he doesn't mean Native Americans. If that isn't bad enough, he goes on to say that because these original inhabitants are naive about ethnic backgrounds. Now, what does that mean? Because we object to hit-and-runs and beating up helpless homeless people, and et cetera, et cetera, some of these things that go on that we don't agree with. And then he goes on further to say that if we don't accept the, his ideas of how to live in our city, we should move to Kansas with our mono-ethnic beliefs. Now, he probably would prefer us to go to Siberia, but, and if he had his way, and then he offers to sell our homes for us when we are going to be shoveled off to Kansas or Siberia or wherever. You know what? We mono-ethnic pioneers are the ones who settled this city and worked hard to build it into the beautiful community that it is, and why should we leave? We welcome these immigrants into our community, providing housing, food stamps, health services, on and on. So again, I ask, why should we, original inhabitants, be banished to Siberia? Because we don't accept their idea of how to live in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no more cards, what is next, please? It's coming, Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize legal services of Dumanyan and Associates, Nancy Dumanyan, to represent the interest of the appointing authority before the Civil Service Commission in the personnel matter and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matters.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, is there a motion to adjourn?
Ooh, so moved, second.
Adjourned at 7:54 P.